Good morning. Thank you. Welcome to the swearing in ceremony of the City of Prattville's 2012-2016 Quadrinium. I'm City Clerk Kathy Dickerson. Reverend Algie Morgan of the Father, Son and Holy Ghost Church will now offer our invocation. Please.
Can you bow and pray with us, please? Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us. We thank you for this occasion. We thank you for all the families as represented here. As we pray for our city elected officials, our mayor and councils, we pray that you will continue to give them wisdom and knowledge and acknowledge you in all their doing for the betterment of our city and our resident. We pray that the city council and the mayor will work together for the betterment of the city, both on the east side, the west side, north side, and south side, so that there will be a flow for all sides. We pray for the family of the elected officials and the resident, that when things does not go sometime according to the way we would like for them and we have to voice our opinion, we pray that we would do it with simplicity and respect for our leaders. We pray that our city will continue to be the preferred city, both in prosperity, growth, but also that we prefer God in all that we do. We prefer peace rather than war. We prefer harmony rather than division. We pray that our city will continue to be a city that others can model by, that in all of our business, we acknowledge you and we're unashamed to acknowledge you for your direction. Bless this day. Bless our leaders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We now request Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. to come forward with his family to be sworn in by the Honorable Rob Riddle.
Are you gonna go slow this time?
Mayor, if you'll please raise your right hand. I, Bill Gillespie Jr.
I, Bill Gillespie Jr.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the State of Alabama.
the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue.
so long as I continue.
a citizen thereof.
a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you, everyone. Made me a few notes. I've been known to speak a little too long sometimes, and so I've been able to craft some here today. But just want to say thank you for being here, day one of our future, day one of 1,460. You know, this is democracy at its best. Our election process has formed a team. The seven who will be sitting up here behind me will, has gone through that process, and I think it's been a very good team that has been selected by our community. I think you can expect a lot from me and from this team as we continue to move this city forward. We've gotten this far with your participation as stakeholders and partners of Prattville, and whenever I say that, I'm talking about the Toga County commissioners, the citizens out in the county. So it's not just the citizens of Prattville, but it's everybody here that's involved to help this great city move forward. But you also are key to our success. With that said, I want to urge you to stay engaged through our different committees that we have formed and will continue to form. You know, here in America, we're, we in America do not have government by the majority. We have government by the majority that participates, and I truly want to urge each and every one of you guys to please stay engaged, because that is the only way that we'll really be able to move forward. Alone, we can do so little, but together, we can continue to do so much. The job that had in front of me is not about me, but about us, our community, our future generation. Cooperation and communication between us is going to be the key to our continued success. With that said, I want to thank my family, my friends, my supporters, department heads and city employees. And I want to step back again, too, when I said my family, because it's the ones that are here, the ones that are not here, the ones that helped moving forward in this. Excuse me for just a moment there. But without a lot of great leadership from my father, my father-in-law, were not here, it's, this day would not be happening. It's not good to sometimes show your motions in public, but I think at other times, you can get away with that. But without each and every one of you and the prayers you've said over the past 21 months, I couldn't have survived to the best that I have already. But please continue to pray for all of us, especially myself and the seven who will be sitting up here behind me in the very near future. We still have many challenges before us. Thank you again for your support, and please stay engaged and help this city of ours move forward. Thank you.
All right. Our city council will now take their oath of office by order of district. So I will call the council member's name, and if their family would come forward with them, along with the person swearing them in. Counselor Albert Striplin will be sworn in by the Honorable Louis Colley.
I, Albert Striplin.
I, Albert Striplin.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
State of Alabama.
of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue.
so long as I continue.
a citizen thereof.
a citizen thereof.
I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
All right. Counselor Willie Wood Jr. will be sworn in by Ms. Deborah Moy.
Thank you. If you will repeat after me. I, Willie L. Wood Jr.
I, Willie L. Wood Jr.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Counselor Denise Brown will be sworn in by the Honorable Louis Colley.
I, Denise B. Brown.
I, Denise B. Brown.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the State of Alabama.
of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue.
so long as I continue.
a citizen thereof.
a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Counselor-elect Jerry Starnes will be sworn in by the Honorable Ben Fuller.
Jerry, it is my honor indeed to administer this oath to you. Please repeat after me. I, Jerry Starnes.
I, Jerry Starnes.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Counselor-elect Clyde Chambliss Jr. will be sworn in by Senior Pastor Roger Parks, Heritage Baptist Church.
Clyde, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Clyde Chambliss Jr.
I, Clyde Chambliss Jr.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Counselor Ray Bowles will be sworn in by Senior Pastor John Schmidt, Center Point Fellowship Church.
Ray, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ray C. Bowles.
I, Ray C. Bowles.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Counselor-elect Laura Lee Boone will be sworn in by Senior Pastor Roger Parks, Heritage Baptist Church.
Raise your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Laura Lee Boone.
I, Laura Lee Boone.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order and have a roll call. Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Okay. The city attorney has informed me that we need to go into executive session before the election of council president. So do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of going into executive session, please raise your right hand. Thank you. We'll enter an executive. All right. I'll need a motion to leave executive session and re-enter regular session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll need a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Now I'll need a nomination for council president.
Madam Clerk, I place the name of Willie L. Wood as president of the council.
Do I hear a second? All right. Well, this will be a roll call vote, so I'll need a raise of your right hand and "aye" for those that are in favor. So if you'll raise your right hand, if you're in favor of Willie Wood as council president, please raise your right hand and state "aye." Okay. I'm sorry. I don't normally do this. Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. President. I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have a gavel over there at this time, or do I need to tap with my hand if necessary? No, that'll be quite all right. First of all, let me take the opportunity to thank Lord God Almighty for who has done so much for me, who has blessed me and blessed all of you down through the years. We give him all the glory, and we give him honor, and we give him the praise for everything. Secondly, I'd like to thank my family, my friends, and my parents who are deceased. As Bill said, this can get kind of emotional, you know. My dad, Willie L. Wood Sr., as many of you all know, ran for city council at large. He was the first black to run, but he never got elected, but he lived to see me get elected. And I thank God for his guidance and leadership and that he instilled in me that I would want to serve mankind, and I truly thank him. I also like to thank you, Deborah Moy, for taking the opportunity to swear me in today. Would like to congratulate all the council members on their being election and the mayor to this term. Would like to congratulate President Pro Tem, Mr. Albert Striplin, who will serve in my absence. Finally, I'd like to thank all of you for attending. Thank the chamber and all those who are responsible for the reception that will follow. With that being said, we now have two items of business to take care before concluding to the reception. Two agenda items. First item is an ordinance to set council procedures for the 2012-2016 Quadrinium. Counselor Striplin, will you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the order of procedure in all instances for meetings of the council shall be as follows. Section one, that the rules of order or procedure herein contained shall govern deliberations in meetings of the council of Prattville, Alabama. Section two, regular meetings of the council shall be held on the following dates, the first and third Tuesdays of each month. Section three, special meetings may be held at the call of the presiding officer by serving notice on each member of the council, not less than 24 hours before the time set for such special meetings. Or special meetings may be held as provided by Section 1143-50 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Whenever two council members and/or the mayor making the request shall have the right to call such meeting. Notice of all special meetings shall be posted on our bulletin board accessible to the public at least 24 hours prior notice, prior to such meeting. In the event of an emergency, the council may call a meeting with a one-hour notice if circumstances require immediate action to avoid physical injury to persons or damage to property. Section four, a quorum shall be determined as provided by Section 1143-48 Code of Alabama. Section five, the regular meeting of the first and third Tuesdays of each month shall convene immediately following the 6:00 PM public hearing at City Hall, and all meetings, regular and special, shall be open to the public. Section six, the order of business shall be as follows. One, pledge of allegiance to the flag. Number two, invocation. Three, a call to order. Four, a roll call. Five, approval of minutes. Six, comments by persons present regarding current agenda items only. Seven, report of the mayor. Eight, report on status of city finances, the second meeting each month. Nine, report on standing committees and special reports. Ten, resolutions, ordinances, orders, and other business. And eleven, comments by persons present. Section seven, the council shall receive a report from the finance director or his or her designee on the status of city finances during the second meeting of each month. Section eight, no person, not a member of the council, shall be allowed to address the same while in session without permission from the presiding officer. Section nine, persons wishing to address the council during number six of the order of business shall restrict comments to current agenda items only. Persons wishing to express general comments shall appear before the council during number 11 of the order of business. Comments during number six and number 11 of the order of business shall be limited to no more than five minutes. The presiding officer may reduce or increase the comment period when necessary. Section six, no member shall speak more than twice on the same subject without permission from the presiding officer. Section 11, motions to consider must be made by a member who voted with a majority and at the same or next succeeding meeting of the council. Section 12, whenever it shall be required by one or more members, the yays and nays shall be recorded, and any member may call for a division on a question. Section 13, whenever it shall be required by one or more members, the yays and nays shall be recorded, and any member may call for a division on any question. Otherwise, when called upon by the presiding officers, members shall raise their right hand to signify the yays and nays. Section 14, the presiding officer of the council shall decide all questions of order with the right of appeal to the council by any member. Section 15, the presiding officer of the council may, at his or her discretion, call any member to take the chair, to allow him or her to address the council, make a motion, or discuss any other matter at issue. Section 16, motions to lay any matter on the table shall be first in order, and on all questions, the last amendment, and on all questions, the last amendment, the most distant day, and the largest sum shall be put first. Section 17, all meetings of the council shall be open to the public, except when the council meets in executive session as authorized by state law. Section 18, the council may meet in executive session only for these purposes as authorized by state law. One, job performance, general reputation and character, physical condition, professional competence, and mental health. Number two, formal complaints or charges against an individual or legal entity. Three, discussions with the city attorney. Four, security plans and measures. Five, criminal investigation and the identity of an undercover agent or informer. Six, negotiations to buy, sell, lease, real property. Number seven, preliminary negotiations in trade competition. Number eight, negotiations between the body and a group of public employees. Or, number nine, to discuss and vote upon a public or contested case hearing. When a council member makes a motion to go into executive session for an enumerated purpose, the presiding officer shall put the motion to a vote. If the majority of the council shall favor, shall vote in favor of the motion to go into executive session, the body shall then move into executive session to discuss the matter for which the executive session was called. No action may be taken in an executive session. When the discussion has been completed, the council shall resume its deliberations in Section 19, a motion for adjournment shall always be in order. Section 20, the rules of the council may be altered, amended, or temporarily suspended by a vote of two-thirds of the members present. Section 21, the chairman of each respective committee or council member acting for him or her shall submit or make all reports to the council when so requested by the presiding officer or any council or any member of the council. Section 22, all ordinances, resolutions, and propositions submitted to the council which require the expenditure of money shall lie over until the next meeting, provided further that this rule shall not apply to the current expenses of or contracts previously made with or regular salaries of the officers or wages of employees of the city. All ordinances and resolutions shall contain in the title of the total amount of any expenditures of funds. Section 23, the city clerk, engineer, attorney, finance director, and chief of police, and such other officers or employees of the City of Prattville shall, when requested, attend all meetings of the council and shall remain in the council room for such length of time as the council may direct. Section 24, no ordinance or resolution of a permanent nature shall be adopted at the meeting at which it is introduced unless unanimous consent be obtained for the immediate consideration of such ordinance or resolution. Such consent shall be by roll call and the vote thereon, their own, spread upon the minutes. Section 25, Robert's Rules of Order is hereby adopted as rules of procedure for this council in those situations which cannot be resolved by the rules set out in this ordinance. Section 26, this ordinance shall go into effect upon the passage and publication as required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
You've heard the reading of this ordinance by Counselor Striplin. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. As he has just read, in section 24, this is an ordinance of permanent nature, cannot be discussed unless there are rules to be suspended. It must be unanimous. Do I hear an order to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Ordinance is now up for discussion, any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Ordinance passed, 7-0. Next order of business. And the final order is a resolution to provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meetings, agenda, and agenda packet for the 2012-2016 quadrennium. Counselor Brown, will you introduce it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the city council of the city of Prattville has established by ordinance an order of procedure for its regular meetings, and whereas in order to aid and assist the council in its decision-making process, there needs to be established standard procedure for the consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Be it therefore resolved as follows. Number one, the council may set such informal meetings as is necessary to fully conduct its business. Two, that the city clerk be and is designated as agenda clerk, whose responsibility shall be and includes the preparation of an agenda for each council meeting and an informal agenda for informal meetings. Three, each resolution or ordinance placed on the agenda for consideration at a regular meeting shall be included in a proposed agenda package which shall be distributed prior to any informal meetings. Four, any council member filing ordinance or resolution for consideration shall be prepared at the informal meeting to provide a brief explanation of the proposed item, input and reports of authorities and/or departments which have studied or had input into the item, if any, exhibits financial impact. Five, all resolutions and ordinances to be included on the agenda for a regular meeting must be submitted in writing to the city clerk on the attached form marked Exhibit A, no later than 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday prior to the next scheduled council meeting. Six, all resolutions and ordinances must have an indicated sponsor who shall be a member of the city council before being submitted, and that the summaries of the agenda shall carry with it the name of the sponsor of the resolution or ordinance. Seven, the clerk shall complete the agenda for a regular meeting and an agenda packet shall be emailed or otherwise made available to council members no later than 12:00 o'clock noon on Friday before the regular scheduled council meeting. Eight, any resolution or ordinance brought from the floor during a council meeting shall be presented in writing. The council must have unanimous consent to suspend the rules in order to consider the resolution or ordinance brought from the floor at that meeting. If there is not unanimous consent to suspend the rules, the resolution or ordinance will hold over until the next meeting. Nine, any member of the council may raise an objection to any violation of this procedure, and upon such objection, the matter shall not be considered without unanimous vote. However, the failure to raise any objection is a waiver and implied consent, and no action taken without objection shall be invalid for any violation of procedure. Ten, the agenda packet shall not be required for a special or called meeting, and at a regular meeting, an ordinance or resolution may be considered without being included on the agenda by a unanimous vote of the council present, but should only be used for emergency measures. Eleven, there is hereby established a consent docket which shall consist of any ordinances or resolution which is non-controversial and does not require discussion or laying over. All ordinances and resolutions on the consent docket need not be read, discussed, or passed individually, but shall be passed and approved by motion for approval of the entire consent docket. However, any council member may at any time, including up until the passage of the consent docket, have any ordinance, resolution, or motion removed from the consent docket and placed on the regular docket. The sole and only purpose of this provision is to expedite the meeting, and it shall not in any way be used for any purpose against the public interest. Twelve, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed. Thirteen, that all budgeted capital expenditures requiring additional council approval may be voted on as requested. So moved, Mr. President.
Read the resolution read by Counselor Brown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passed. That concludes a very short agenda, ladies and gentlemen, for this organization meeting. Again, I want to thank you all for being here. Thank those who have prepared condiments for a reception. But at this time, we will allow the mayor to speak finally, and all council members proceeding him. Mayor.
Again, thank you. Congratulations to each and every one of you guys up there. You know, this world is about choices. You have made choices, not only for you, your family, and this community, and I feel like that the choices that you have made are very, will be carried out to their fullest. I truly believe that you do realize the gravity that has been put on you from this office, and, but I look forward to the future, working very closely with each and every one of you guys as a team, and that's the only way that we will be able to move this city forward. But in closing, I do want to thank again my family, because without my mother, my mother-in-law, my wife especially, I don't know how she's put up with me the way that she has over all these years, but also my daughter and my son who cannot be here. But thank you each and everyone, you guys, for coming out, and also I see Dr. Tom Miller. Without him, I would not be in this position, so thank you so graciously.
Thank you. Just take a moment, I feel like I've been talking all morning, but thank you for coming. I appreciate the opportunity to be of service and look forward to working together with the mayor and the council. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you too for everybody for coming and for my family for being here, my friends, and so excited for the opportunity to work for our great city and to work with each of the individuals up here, and congratulations to the president and the vice president, and I look forward to a great four years.
I'd like to say thank you to my family, my friends, Judge Fuller for holding and swearing me in today. I want to say thank you, District Four, for electing me. Not only will I serve District Four, but I also serve the city of Prattville. And congratulations, mayor and city council. Also, I'd like to say a special thanks to Tom Miller. He helped me, and he provided good guidance for me, and I just want to tell him thank you.
I too would like to thank my family seated here on the third row, wife and daughters, mother-in-law, mom, dad, sister, brother-in-laws, and all the folks who helped in my campaign and have elected me to this position, the citizens of District Five. And I really have a very optimistic view of what's going to happen here in the next four years with the city council and the mayor working together, hand in hand, and moving our city forward, and I am just very blessed to be a part of it. Thank you.
I just want to start out by saying thanks to District Six for allowing me to do this for a second term. Dad, for running the store, couldn't have done it without you. My wife Angie, she's homesick, she really regrets that. She was very, very ill last night. My pastor, John Schmidt, thank you for coming and swearing me in. My girls, for putting up with me. It was a tough summer, but they're used to it. And to District Six, again, I just appreciate it. I'm looking forward to the next four years. They're going to be so great. We're going to have a great four years. The city's not going to be recognizable in four years. And Dr. Miller, for the four years he sat beside me, became a great friend. I expect to see you down there running a lot on the property, and I will try to get that bridge up for the summers out. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
I'd just like to say thank you to my family who's here today and for supporting me throughout the election process. Thank you very much, District Seven, for putting me in this office, and I'd like to thank the Lord, because I know he's ultimately the one who put me in this office, and I hope to serve him and you over the next four years. My office is open, my phone line is open. Come find me. I want to see great things happen to the city of Prattville. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen. I see several former council members, mayors, representatives, county commissioners. So in order not to miss anybody, if you're from the county, former council member, mayor, elected official, will you please stand? Let's get him in. Thank you. I want to thank you all for what you do also. Again, Kathy, I want to thank you for the job that you've done so very well, and your assistant. I want to thank all city employees for the job that you have done and that you will continue to do. Again, our next meeting will be tomorrow night, and we want to see all of you all. (laughter) Every one of you all back here at 6:00 p.m. to see the real deal. Again, thank you so much, council members, for the confidence that you have shown in me. I will do my best to try to lead you appropriately. My job now is to keep the legislative branch moving forward and trying to foster a sense of harmony on the council. The council has its role to play, and the mayor has his. We are not here to do the mayor's job, nor is he here to do ours. We will work with the mayor to move the community forward, and as early as possible, I will present to each council member their obligations for the committees on which they will serve. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, thank you again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Congratulations. Now you may get with your families and have something to eat. Thank you. God bless.